Okay, I would like to call to order the business meeting for this evening and start off with attendance. I'm here. Alan?
Yes.
John?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Jim? Stephanie? Jennifer? Lisa? Michael?
Here.
Julie? Peter? Okay, we have a full house. Great. All right, we begin our program this evening with an important agenda every year is to recognize our volunteers. We'll start there. So Pat, I'll turn the floor over to you.
I think I'm gonna go out of order because I don't see the volunteers. So I'm gonna go backwards a little bit. I'm gonna start with Teacher of the Year. Nothing more important. I think this is our third year where our school district got involved with the Connecticut Teacher of the Year Program. This has been going on in the state and nationally for a very long time, and Region 12 was involved in it and then, for whatever reason, stopped participating. And we decided to bring it back. So our first year bringing it back, it was Mary Ann Marr, who was a math teacher at Middle High School. And then last year was Kelly White, a 3rd grade teacher at WPS. And this year, I'm happy to say, we have a special educator at the middle high school, and that is Lisa Holmes. So let me tell you about Lisa a little bit, because we really are very excited. Lisa is a co-teacher for the past two years with Joe McSweeney. She goes over and above in her role as a co-teacher. She develops curriculum, she plans, she grades, she analyzes data, she differentiates for kids as needed. She chairs clubs for students, volunteers for track, and other duties. She works closely with the senior for whom she is responsible. She offers her time to sped and non-sped students any time she has available. Her room is always full of students before school, during advisory, at lunch, and after school. Her devotion is truly admirable. And I have to tell you, I think that is the piece that really sealed the deal for her. Because we had some wonderful nominations, but Lisa is someone who always has kids around her to help in any way that she can. And that was very evident by the people on the committee, and they really felt strongly that she was a great person to represent the profession in Region 12. She is not only beneficial to students, but she's beneficial to her colleagues and other teachers and staff members. She has helped other teachers learning how to differentiate for other students, how to be more flexible, how to see the bigger picture, how to help with skills and concepts in a way that's meaningful to kids. I told Lisa that my greatest memory of her will be, and will always be, the day she had her head shaved for St. Baldry's with Ms. Gora and her family here last year, and she was in the front page of the News Times. So I am going to invite her up. You will see, her hair has grown back, she looks beautiful. And it is my pleasure to present Mrs. Lisa Holmes, the Teacher of the Year, Region 12.[241.12][241.12][applause]
I'd just like to thank Dr. Constantino and the Board of Ed for the generous support and resources you've given me over the years to be the teacher that I am. I'd like to thank the teacher that nominated me and the committee that chose me to be Teacher of the Year, and I feel this is a huge, huge honor to represent this region. Thank you very much.[284.83][284.83][applause]
Congratulations.
Pat, before you continue...
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I know we have one board member who would like to say something.
Absolutely.
Michael.
So I just wanted to do a special congratulations to Lisa Holmes from my family. I got to know Lisa for an unfortunate reason. My oldest daughter Kathleen struggled for years and years with Lyme disease, and Lisa was the, kind of the eye of the hurricane for us. I think that would be a great way of describing her. When everything seemed to be spinning kind of out of control, she was that force of calm and hope. And she carried through, I'm gonna try not to get emotional, but she carried through for years with not just my daughter, but our family, and helping us. And so when I think of caring and I think of compassion, I think of Lisa Holmes. And if I could, I'd make you Teacher of the Year for the whole nation, so.[360.62][360.62][applause]
Just so you know, Lisa now will work on paperwork which includes her vision of education, how she's impacted the community, the nation, students. And then she competes then against the teachers in Connecticut. And in November, they choose a Teacher of the Year, and then you go nationally. So you never know, Lisa. The sky's the limit. So good luck. I want to let everybody know, number one, there are more seats here, and I will wait a minute while we drag more seats over so people can sit. Come on, go ahead. Get a seat, everybody. There's plenty up here also. The other thing I want to let you know is, please don't leave, because we are gonna take pictures with your family, everyone, when we're done. And we're happy to give you a copy. Colin is a great photographer. And we have goodies. So please stay, and we're so happy to see so many people here. This is wonderful. Okay, so we are now moving to the recognition of students for the student award recipients from the Litchfield County Superintendent's Association. The superintendent associations picks students each year from 5th, 8th, 11th, and 12th grade in Region 12. And this is the award that keeps on giving, I keep telling people, because they get it here, we go to Litchfield for dinner, we do it at Aloha, we do it at the awards assembly. So it's a wonderful award that really celebrates kids who are leaders, who show great courage in the classroom and the schools. They're involved in student council, they're involved in projects to help people who are less fortunate. They are involved with activities in school, out of school, and they're chosen by their principals. And they're really very well-deserving. So I will have them come up, and now they're going to get a flag. Okay, so first one from booth three, this is Isabella Navoli.[502.12][502.12][applause] I have to tell you what happened to my 2nd grade. In all these schools, we started, they were kindergarten, I was superintendent, so we really have bonded, so I really, I'm going to miss them. And if they remember, I will come back to their high school graduation with a happy birthday. So we'll see what happens. Our next one from WPS is Alana Arquilla.[562.12][562.12][applause] Okay, now we have Chapag 3. Brian Malik. Malik, sorry. Yeah? I'm saying it's Alana. What did we say? Brian Malik? I'm thinking Chapag 4. Okay. Okay. 11th grade at Chapag, Allison Harper.[607.12][607.12][applause] And last but not least, in 12th grade, Olivia Moore.[623.12][623.12][applause] I just wanted to make sure, Olivia won the Stephen Wright Award last week.[644.12][644.12][applause] No more important award that we give. Not that these aren't important, but that is just a feeding of light and hope that Chapag made its meaning, someone who really goes above beyond, so congratulations, really, Okay, now we have the CAE Student Leadership Awards, and these voted 2 8th graders and 2 12th graders. So, let's see. Okay, now CAE, I'll just type it over on CAE. CAE is the Connecticut Association of Board of Education, and is the organization that the Board of Education belongs to. It helps guide the boards in writing policy, in helping to understand the needs of students and families and communities, working to make sure that the schools are the best they can be, helping with information about school safety and finance and health-related issues, all of those things. And again, a Board of Education chooses someone through the principals because, again, they show great leadership, they show the ability to think, to care for people, to problem-solve, and to hopefully lead in the future. And wouldn't it be great if these kids eventually sat on a Board of Education one year and devoted their time to really making schools the best they could be? That would be fabulous. That's the way to get back. So, our first recipient from Chapag is Giacomo Palangelo.[766.12][766.12][applause] And now from 8th grade also is Jessica Pislin.[788.12][788.12][applause] And then we have 4th grade Emma Krebs.[806.12][806.12][applause] Oh, should I say state? Which state? Which one? Track.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy. Okay, hopefully she'll run in. We'll see. If not, we'll try to get her back on the 18th maybe, probably in months. And our last is, oh, yeah, I'm looking for one. Who is related, as you all know, to the Board of Education. Okay, now, okay, I'm standing here, so now we're going to do, I see one of the volunteers here. Two volunteers, I don't know if they're both here. I see one. She's fabulous, fabulous. I've enjoyed working with her many, many years. Diana Kelly, come on up, from Burnham School.[876.12][876.12][applause] And Diana has been, I think she's been here for a few years now?
Just one.
Oh, just one, seems, okay, she needs a minute, all this.[892.12][892.12][laughter] She has, and she's a tireless advocate for student needs and staunch supporter of the faculty and staff at Burnham. She cheerfully participates and shares counter Burnham school activities, specifically the harvest gatherings, field fundraisers, collective fair, and hot lunch programs. A positive presence in the school and in Bridge Water, she is always felt appreciated. And she also made the Bridge Water range volunteer, isn't it, of the year? Yeah! So it's very nice, it's a wedding honor, she's really very special. Well, thank you very much.[933.12][933.12][applause] I don't know if she's here, but I'll have to try. Is Maggie here? Yeah, she must be, because I saw her up here. Because I didn't realize, I'm just thinking, we have a double, double family dinner here. So Maggie Palangelo, hi Maggie. There you go, hold on, sit back, congratulations. Is a volunteer, she's one of the mayhem from Chapag Valley School. And she's the type of parent that simply feels one helping needed. She's currently working to create an awesome bakery banquet. She was shot down for Halloween dance and served in sports or sports meets. We're especially touched by her efforts, but Maggie led the other parents who created a special breakfast for the staff at the dinner table. And I know that meant a lot to everyone here, so thank you so much.[990.12][990.12][applause] This is a good time. Mrs. Gallo is always here and couldn't make it tonight, she had a family emergency. So I do want to send her regards, because this is like one of her favorite things to do, the top five. She's not here, I'll do it. So, top five, how exciting. I'm gonna go backwards. Number five, we have, and I'll have you come up, and unfortunately, I'm just gonna kind of read what people wrote about you, because I normally don't do this part, so. Madison Baker, come on up.[1035.12][1035.12][applause] So stand here, Madison, and let me tell everybody how wonderful you are, okay? Maddie is a cheerful and exuberant young woman. Her easygoing manner and calm heart have helped her form strong connections with her peers and strengthen the fabric of the school community. Maddie's outstanding academic progress is in part a product of her ability to make connections amongst complex concepts, understand them, and develop personal insights based on her analysis. Her senior project titled "My Hometown" is indicative of her connections with others. For her project, Maddie interviewed area residents, researched unique characteristics of her town, and quilted the many facets of a small town into a book. Well, how wonderful. We'll take the top five together when we're done, okay? So no one can leave. Okay, number four, number four, Avery Searah, come on up![1112.12][1112.12][applause] Congratulations. Okay, stand here. Although Avery always exudes warmth, understanding, and sincerity, she is tenuous and pursues her goals with veracity. She is a quiet leader and leads by positive example. Avery is self-driven, reliable, passionate, and a genuine person in all that she does. She recently stated that the most memorable part of her high school has been the bonds that she has been able to create in the community, a testimony to her gratitude and maturity. Congratulations. Okay, number three, number three. Here we go. Okay. Jack Rousch, come on up![1170.12][1170.12][applause] Why don't you come here and give this to him? Yeah. Okay, we'll have your mom give it to you, and I'll read, okay? So you two could stand there and look gorgeous together. Okay, here we go. Jack has earned a reputation of being a student who strives for the highest level of learning and embraces every challenge. His passion for academics is clearly evident going beyond what is required simply for the sake of expanding his knowledge. Jack is that rare student who is humble, thoughtful, self-disciplined, genuine, and mature beyond his years. He appreciates and values his family and friends and holds them in high regard. Good for you. My pleasure. Okay. All right, number two, the salutatorian goes to Tierney Kovacs.[1237.12][1237.12][applause] Congratulations. Tell me you shake your hand, and then I'll, okay, stand here. Okay. This year's salutatorian, Tierney Kovacs, is an outstanding contributor to the Chapag learning community and beyond. She is a humble leader who serves as class president and is a celebrated captain of the field hockey and swim teams. She is a member of the National Honor Society and is an active participant in Model UN and Future Business Leaders of America. She is triumphant while balancing her rigorous academic course load and plethora of extracurricular activities, bringing intellect and discipline to her varied commitments. However, most impressive is her true humanitarian nature and compassion for others evident in her senior project focused on providing grief counseling to children. So I don't know if she ran in while I was... Is she here? Is Emma here? Listen, Emma, run this way! Come here, Emma. Emma Krebs![1318.12][1318.12][applause] Valedictorian, right here, running in! Come on![1325.12][1325.12][applause] First, tell us, how'd you do?
Um, not, I mean, all right.[1334.12][1334.12][laughter]
Did you finish the race?
Yeah, yes.
That's what's important, you finished the race. Okay, good for you. Okay, so first of all, you are the recipient of the CAE Student Leadership Award. Okay, so that's this one, congratulations. Okay? And then, you are the class valedictorian for class of 2018, so isn't that fabulous, huh? Congratulations! Hold on.[1362.38][1362.38][applause] I'm gonna read all about it, okay? So let's see. Emma Krebs, this year's valedictorian, is an incredibly sincere and humble young lady. Whatever she pursues as a goal, personally or professionally, Emma has the intellectual, social, and moral character to see it accomplished. Not only does she excel, but furthermore, she has a positive impact on those around her. Her pursuit of excellence extends beyond the classroom, where Emma broke the school record in track and field her sophomore year and continues that tradition, leading the cross-country indoor track and outdoor track teams through her tireless example. She is a true role model in our school and an absolute pleasure to be around. Before you leave, okay, come on. Ooh, a lot of girls, hmm. And Jack? Yeah, right here. Do you ever watch Will and Grace, Jack?
No.
No, oh, you're gonna go in, oh, you don't? Oh, 'cause, well, there's a character called Just Jack, so that's what I was gonna say, Just Jack. But that's okay. Take a nice picture. Okay, so now, before you sit, does the board have questions? In the past, you've had questions. Come on, somebody.
Well, I know in the past, we've often asked either if you could tell us about a favorite Chapag memory, or a teacher that has really inspired you. So if you want to choose one of those...
Would you like to speak first? Is that it?[1484.12][1484.12][laughter]
So I'll just talk about a teacher that's really important to me. She's sitting right over there, Ms. Marr. She was actually my TA for my senior project, and I said it then, and I'll say it again, but she was the best TA I could have asked for. I had a really difficult time with my project, just kind of, I encountered a lot of problems, and through each one, she just encouraged me to keep going in any way that I wanted to, which was really helpful. And she gave me life advice, so not just for my project, but life advice that I'll take for the rest of my life. So she's just the best teacher I've ever had in this entire school, and yeah, so thank you so much again.[1529.12][1529.12][applause]
So back when I was a freshman, I was desperately trying to get onto Model UN. And for those of you who don't know, Model UN has a faculty advisor, and that is Chris Dennis. And Chris Dennis is a phenomenal guy, and he was willing to listen to me even though I was this pudgy little freshman, and usually they don't let freshmen onto Model UN. But finally, he relented, and I got to go to the Ivy League Conference in Philadelphia with the Model UN delegation. And sort of from that moment on, Mr. Dennis really became my advocate and my mentor here at Chapag. I had him for Contemporary Studies and Foreign Policy, I think it was. And he's really just a phenomenal teacher. He really facilitates the students in their learning and really inspired me to be an independent learner myself. So Mr. Dennis has definitely been a member of the faculty that I've made a connection
A teacher who has been really special to me here at Chapag is also Ms. Marr. I started with her when I took Algebra I in 7th grade, and then I ended last year with her taking AP Calculus. And through there, she was just such a help with me with any question I had, and was always so willing to help and make herself available to everyone, not just me. And she really was so caring and really just cared for everyone that she had. She's also been kind of like a second mom to me, encouraging me with all like the college stuff and just whatever I'm doing in general. And she's sat with me many times to talk about college or my senior project, and I just really appreciate her doing that for me and always reaching out to me.[1633.12][1633.12][applause]
A teacher that's really helped me throughout the last four years is Mr. Spear. He's been my coach, he helped me when I switched over from soccer to cross-country, and I also had him in class, so he knows me as a student and athlete. And he basically just, he's been there for me whether it was a personal experience or question I had, or something that related to school or sports. And he's basically just someone who's helped me through and was always there for me, so.[1669.12][1669.12][applause]
So senior year is kind of like the worst in a lot of ways, because you're super stressed out about your senior project in college. And the one teacher that always helped me calm down and stay grounded was Mrs. Stewart. Sue was my TA, even though she wasn't my TA, she, I met with her every day for my senior project. And she has such a kind heart. I know her like outside of school, inside of school, even though I'm not on her team, she really does care, and she dedicates so much time to her students. My senior project wouldn't have been a success if it weren't for Sue. She helped me in more ways than she knows, so.[1711.12][1711.12][applause]
Very nice.[1714.12][1714.12][applause]
Please. I'd like to hear what your plans are for the fall. Where's everybody heading or planning on doing or going or seeing?
Go that way, there we go.
So in the fall, I'll be attending Syracuse University. I'm majoring in nutrition, and I hope to become a registered dietitian.
Okay.
I'm gonna be at UConn next year, and I'm going into Allied Health Sciences and hoping to be in the pediatrics, so.
I'm going to Bentley next year, I'm not quite sure exactly what, but I want to do either a double major with international business and economics, or international business and Spanish, and then minor in the other one.
Next fall, I am headed to Scotland to attend the University of St. Andrews, where I'll be studying international relations and geography.
So I'll be attending Suffolk University in Boston, where I'll be majoring in law in hopes of becoming a lawyer.
Jack, I assume you're bringing golf clubs with you? Just small chance? Of course. Well, congratulations. I wish, on behalf of the board, continued success as you head out.
As I said, the board should call in the board. As I said, the board should probably come here and take pictures and go out and do your child, your family, and your awards, whatever you want to do, okay? And then there's freshmen, so thank you all for coming, and I guess we'll adjourn for about 10 minutes?
We'll take a recess for 10, 15 minutes. Why don't we reconvene at some 7:15?
Okay.
Is that good?
Yep.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Get to use the hammer. Hang on, Mike. Can I please have the board members take their seats so we can continue? Okay, so we'll continue on the agenda. We are at item E, public to comment on the agenda items. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions? Hang on, we'll wait for Pete.
He just realized there were people here.
Peter?
Peter?
We'll give you a second. Okay. Make sure the record shows it. Alright, are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Alright, hearing none, the consent agenda items pass. Moving on to reports and recognitions, we'll start with the board's chair's report. I would like to, this past week were the academic and sports awards. I attended both, and both were very nice ceremonies, Pat. I know Lori had a lot to do with at least the academic awards and obviously Matt on the other side, but really well done. And so my congratulations go out to all the award winners on both evenings. Also want a little shout-out to our baseball team, girls tennis, who were both victorious this weekend. I understand that baseball was a close game, 13 to nothing, I think, or maybe one. And, excuse me? Yeah, so congratulations to them, and the girls tennis also had success, and of course, girls track team as well. So it's nice to see big things coming out of a little school. Pat?
Thank you. To piggyback on that, the boys are playing tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at Mussey Fields in Bristol. It's gonna be very, very exciting, so if you can make it, please go. I think it's gonna be a great night. I also just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I attended Saturday night the ASAP Young Writers Award Ceremony, and it was just spectacular. Twelve students from all over Connecticut, mostly Litchfield County and Fairfield County, and they were just really, the writing, the poetry, the themes are outstanding. We had two students. We had Ava Lukey from, she's now in Burnham School, and then we had Connor Richardson. And they both were great, but Connor was really outstanding. His poem about, I think his name is William DuBois, am I right? And he was an advocate and African-American who fought for civil rights, and it was just unbelievable, and treating people with decency and kindness and equality. It was really, I'm telling you, he was amazing. So congratulations. I also want to congratulate Wilson King, who got second place and who wants to be a mathematician at WestCon. And I also want to, Wilson was left off of the honor roll on some list somewhere, and I just want to let everybody know that Wilson King is very, very bright and is on the honor roll and is taking advanced classes, and we're very proud of him. And his mom's pretty spectacular, too. So I just want to give him a shout-out for that. And that's all I'm going to say at that point for that. We do have appointment of Freezo Herman, physics teacher at S V S. We have retirement of Teresa Capone, an ed assistant at W P S, and Pat Howard, a school nurse at W P S. And I am sad to tell the board that today Barbara Lenkis gave in her resignation. She's going to Chase Collegius, and she's our S R O. So that'll be on the next agenda, but that was really sad news. And that is my report.
Thank you. That is unfortunate, but we wish her well. Alright, committee reports. Michelle, at advance.
There's a meeting this Thursday down in Danbury at the new building, and I am not able to attend, oh, it's the Berkshire All-Star. So anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Michael, education?
We met this evening, and we're continuing to look at additional offerings in the World Language Department for students that want to take advantage of maybe more than just French and Spanish, not that our program isn't great for those two languages. So that's something that's kind of an ongoing effort. And we're hoping to meet over the summer sometime in July and continue to do a little bit of brainstorming for next year. So if anyone is thinking about coming to that meeting, we'd love to have you. And we'd also love to hear from you, even if you can't make the last week in July, if you have some ideas for topics you'd like to have us address as a board or ideas that you would love of us to look into, we'd be happy to hear from everybody on the board.
Michael, will a notice of an agenda be published of that meeting? If you could do that, yeah. Sent out by email. Thank you.
Greg?
Facilities? Yeah, the facilities committee met recently. We spent most of our meeting really woodshedding the capital plan, and it took most of, the better part of an hour and 45 minutes to get through just booth preschool. And so we're gonna be continuing to work on that in the meetings ahead to figure out what our capital needs are. Some of our needs are being handled by the current budget and by work that's done from year to year, but some of them will be on a longer track. We've also identified some potential savings in some of our capital items for the high school, and so we continue to work on that, and that's what we'll be doing for the next several meetings.
Thank you. Finance, Michelle?
Yes, we met this evening for our meeting tonight, and in general, the operating finances are in good order. We're tracking at .8% of the budget left, which is pretty traditional, and that includes the funding of the 1% fund. Bob indicated that he is going to be using remaining funds as they are, as it seems that they are available to be put towards the AgSTEM so that we don't have to borrow that money, don't have to borrow it in general, or at least not to put off the borrowing. So that was good. We also met May 23, a special afternoon meeting. We met with Wells Fargo, who handles our pension. That was a really informative meeting, explaining about how the pension fund is doing. It's performing really well, which has enabled us to not have to put quite as much money into it, and we are in great shape there, we're fully funded. So we're in great shape there. We also met with Barry Bernaby, who does our bond, is our bond advisor, and he went over several bonding scenarios, brought us up to date on the latest interest rates, and explained how the process would work, and laid out three different scenarios for us to consider moving forward, which we don't have to, that's for the long term, but the bands will be issued soon. We have to get our certification, our rating, our bond rating first, right, Bob?
No, we just have to get the approval from bond council on the bands, and then we're gonna work on our bond rating since we don't have one right now, since we don't have any debt. So we have to start all over again. What we have in place is a loan, it's not considered as a long-term band, or a bond, rather.
Okay, great, thank you. What was, I guess, just to sort of highlight of that meeting was that all three of the bonding scenarios have very level funding or have very little change in our operating budget due to the bond that is coming off. And Barry said he, in all of the projects that he has worked on, he's never seen anything line up so well. So he's usually trying to help towns mitigate large increases and trying to figure out how to level that out. And all three scenarios have a very, very favorable level scenario.
What are those three scenarios?
So it's either borrowing the full nine million upfront all at once, a six and a three and a five and a four. So just staging them. And each of them have different total interest paid over the life of the bonds and have slightly different blips in the funding level. So we'll have to decide when it comes time to moving that into permanent bonding, which scenario we choose. But they're all good and pretty close to one another. So I mean, I think the biggest gap was about $100,000 worth of interest.
Yeah, interest and only about an $80,000 one-year blip in it, but if we take a different scenario, it takes that down over two years.
Right.
All the rest of the years are declining.
Yeah, so it was great, it was great news. And he also said that, you know, for the moment, for the immediate future, he's not seeing anything leading him to believe that interest rates are gonna start climbing through the roof. They're moving a little bit, and we're keeping our eye on it, but we're still within the projections of where we were at the beginning. And it doesn't look like there's any reason to try to quickly get this bond on the market because the interest rates are rising quickly. That does not seem to be the case at the moment, so that was also great news.
But that's still an option that's on the table, right, is to bond sooner rather than later? That's one of the three.
If we feel we need to, first we do the bands, we get our rating, and then as the bills come in and we see, you know, what we need.
And also when we have a firmer handle on what our final cost would look like. But I mean, we need approximately nine months of band money, and in that nine months, we'll be working both on the bond rating and revisiting the scenario at that point as to which makes the most amount of sense, because we'll have harder costs that will be on the table.
So that'll be coming back to the board in the fall or the winter? When movie, well, nine months?
We plan on starting the work for getting the bond rating in the fall after school gets going, and we should have, that usually takes between two and three months to gather everything, meet with all of the appropriate parties, answer all the questions, and get it in place. And then we'll be, in that interim period, we'll have the hard numbers as to what we need, and then we'll go back and we'll take a look and see which is the most favorable, and also where the market is at that point for the interest rates. So if they're staying where they are, it may be beneficial to do it and split it in two pieces, or if it's starting to rise, you might want to do it all at once.
Right.
Okay. That's it. Any other, any questions? Alright.
Long Range Planning, Ellen?
We're still resting. We haven't met. I believe probably at the end of the summer, I'll meet with the new superintendent and decide how much help she wants from the committee, if any. Keep you posted.
Thank you. Negotiations, Greg?
We're about to commence negotiations. We're meeting with our council this week, and we should pretty soon have a schedule for commencing negotiations with the unions representing the custodians and cafeteria workers and the union representing the paraprofessionals and clerical workers. And so those two unions will probably start into negotiations this month.
Thank you. Policies? Michelle, back to you.
Yep, we continue to meet. Don't have anything out of the ordinary. We'll be meeting again in two weeks, and we have a second reading on the agenda for tonight.
If I can just, oh, sorry.
Were you gonna address the tuition and policy?
I was.
I just wondered where that stood. Thank you.
How did you know? Actually, I'm gonna address a piece of that, but I thought, well, let's start with the policy. Michelle, didn't we approve the second, the tuition and policy, the last business meeting we had? Wasn't it a second reading that was approved?
I believe so. I think that one was wrapped up. So the tuition policy, I think, is fine. What was just being held up was the actual contract.
And that's where I was gonna jump in.
Yeah, so I think the policy is set.
So we reviewed the contract that council gave us. They provided their feedback, their final feedback. I talked to Pat about this this morning. There's a couple of just minor edits that need to be made, but the contracts, I would say, for all intensive purposes, are ready for use. Yeah, is that fair?
Yeah. I'm hoping to get them out in the next two days.
Right. It's, I gotta say, I think it's a huge step forward and up in terms of protecting the district's interests while still trying to execute, you know, the whole intention of why we're tuitioning in. And I think it's, when we think back of where we started on this whole subject and kind of how we were doing it, we've come a long way. We've come a long way, and there's a lot of work that was done, and so I know, I want to thank Jim and others who were involved in those discussions. They led to, I think, a good outcome, because what's in there is, it covers the flexible payments, the different methods to accept payments, you know, when payments are really made, when they're not, et cetera, covering, you know, all of our exposure in terms of special needs, and so on and so forth. So I'm sure as we go, there may be an opportunity to, like anything, we'll find something that we'll have a moment and say, well, why didn't we think of that? Or perhaps we can tweak this and put that in there. But that's fine, because one of the things that the contracts say is that they're annual contracts. So each time, they have to be renewed at the beginning of the school year, so we will always have an opportunity to revisit these agreements or the agreement if there's opportunity to tighten it up and improve it, so. or the agreement if there's opportunity to tighten it up and improve it. So, alright. Good for, good for us. Michelle.
I just wanted to let everyone know that the second reading was on April 23rd. So policies, good.
Okay, thank you. Julia, did that answer your question? Alright, so now we'll move on to new business and updates. Back to you, Bob, on the financial status.
Yeah, I sent the report to you and right after that, I got some bills in and a building permit fee. So the report you have in front of you is short four hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. In the project side of this, the new number on page two would be one million, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars, not the one million, five twenty-nine. And I'll update this and get it back out, but those things happened rather quickly and the bills came in rather late. So they didn't make it into this report and for that I apologize, but I will have it updated and you'll have it on the 18th.
In, in terms of getting reimbursed, Bob, on the money spent to date, when's the first opportunity?
Well, we, we first have to get the project underway and then, once we do that, we can do it within the first sixty days. I can prepare, which I've been working on, the first submission. And then after that, it's every two months based upon what you're expended plus your projection. They hold back eleven percent of that money until the project's completed, at the completion of the project. So it's a rolling, every sixty days you can request money. They have a, usually about between fifteen and twenty-five days later, you'll get a check. It'll go back into the account and we'll roll the money again. The audit itself is probably, you can, you could expedite it within six months of the board accepting it, or you could let the state take its, your turn in the hopper, if you will. My suggestion is you get it audited and done locally. So that's how it works.
So that first submission would be, went approximately over the-
Well, the first contract is out there and once we can get it underway, I can say to the state that we're started and then I can, then the clock will start running. My guess at this point, to get that into them and get some money back in the house is probably late August. We'll have money in the house. In the meantime, I'll have the paper done and submitted. First one usually takes a little longer.
Thank you. Any questions for Bob? Greg.
The building committee met tonight, actually it met last Thursday as well, and we are making progress. Last Thursday, we had a special meeting to approve the building permit fee. And the reason for that was we, at this point in time, we do not want to do anything that's gonna cause a delay in delivery. And as a result, we want to keep the project moving and we came to our attention that the building department was not going to. The building department's gonna be hiring outside people to review some facets of the project. And they weren't gonna commence that process until they received an application and a fee. And so we haven't paid the fee yet, but we submitted a purchase order and the check will be delivered sometime this week to the town of Washington. The building permit fee, with today, we had already paid eleven thousand dollars in building permit fees to cover the demolition and mediation work, which is actually starting. We awarded those contracts tonight and that, that actually, the work will start on five July. And the reason why it's five July is because the owner, that's us, doesn't move out of the space until sometime around the 25th of June. And so they're allowing for a few days after that to have the mobilization done, get people here and start. So that work will start July 5.
Greg, remind us exactly what, what is, what is being demoed?
Are they gonna be taking, well, one thing they're gonna be doing is constructing a partition here in the library to partition off of the work area in the science labs. They're gonna be demoing the science labs. They're going to be demoing the exterior walls where the science labs are. They're going to be doing demolition on the north end of the building as well and then abatement. And they've got to do some investigation of a couple of things. We have a sump over there that used to service ground or water related to the auto shop. So they have to make sure that everything's okay over there. Probably is, but we have to check that out. And of course, we have a chemical tank over here that takes spent acids and neutralizes them and they have to check around that. So there's a little bit of that. There'll probably be some remediation work. They'll have to dispose of materials that end up having a hazardous component. And, and so that project is gonna start July 5 and it's scheduled to be completed August 15 and in time for the start of school. It's because we cannot do abatement work in this building. You can't have anyone under the age of eighteen in the building while that abatement work is ongoing. And so as a result, this is being done in the summer. So there's also gonna be work done next summer as well to certain other things that aren't done this summer that aren't necessary.
So to that, to that point, is that the reason, I mean, how literal is that, or I should say extreme is that we can't have anybody in the building that's under eighteen? I mean, the entire building?
In the, when you're doing, when you're doing, when you're doing hazardous material abatement, you cannot have anyone under the age of eighteen in the building. In fact, that's one of the reasons why this building is going to be closed all summer. The grounds will be closed all summer. This summer and next summer. There were, all of the programs that the rec department and leagues and other people do here have all been, all been taken in place somewhere else for the summer. A lot of it's going to primary, the Washington primary. But the outdoor stuff and some of the indoor stuff, but but nothing will be done here in the summer. We, we don't even want to have people over the age of eighteen on site because we don't want people coming and driving in and parking and walking around when we've got contractors in place doing things. And we've got construction vehicles and whatnot. It's a safety issue. The pool will be closed both summers. There will be, there will be no accessibility to the pool and the tennis courts will be closed. So there'll be no accessibility. In fact, the entire site will be closed. And we feel that that's necessary to preserve safety margins and also to get the work done in an expeditious manner. This is gonna have to proceed rapidly and get done on time because we've got the students coming back in August.
And what is, final question, Ellen, if you said, what are the plans to provide temporary labs for next academic year?
Well, we, we're, we're working through that. We do have, we do have a plan for temporary chemistry lab with an appropriate hood and that, and that's going to be done for next year. Don't ask me the details of precisely where, but it, it's in, it's in the building in this, I believe it's in this general vicinity. But there will be a temporary, there will be temporary labs and those will be available during the eighteen to nineteen school year and with any luck, commencing the nineteen-twenty school year. We, there'll still be a period of temporary labs at the beginning of the year, but that will phase out sometime in the first semester.
Thank you.
But, okay, you had some, there were some other questions?
No, yeah, I was, I thought you were done. I didn't mean to cut you off, Greg.
Yeah, no.
Ellen, you had a question?
Yeah, I just, we have three summer meetings and on the agenda so far, they're listed as libraries. So clearly if the facilities are closed, we just have to make a note to make arrangements to have our three summer meetings elsewhere.
Yes.
Plan for that.
That would be a good idea. Julie?
Thank you for that. Julie?
Thanks. Greg, you may have been gonna get to this next, but you started to talk about how much the building permit fees are. And I wondered, I had heard, and I don't know if this is true, but the town of Washington could waive some of those fees? I, I'm curious to know what the total is gonna be and if that's a possibility.
There, there's, there are two components to the building permit fee. The eleven thousand we paid for the, for the, for the the demolition and abatement. And then we just, we are just about to write a check for two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, which is the, I'm sorry? I think, I think it's two, 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 two hundred and forty-two thousand and change. And that is the rest of the building permit fee for the entire project. So there won't, there shouldn't be any more building permit fees after that. It's a little bit down from where we original, originally were, but after our construction manager met with the town, they were able to get some of the cost reduced because certain things didn't need to be part of the basis for that. The building permit fee, there, there are a couple of little small fees, but then there is a fee that's based on nine tenths of one percent of construction cost. And so that, that's the build, that's mostly what it is. Construction costs are, you know, upwards of thirty million and change. You can see that it's a fairly high number that gets charged. The town of Washington, a lot of, some towns rebate it because in some towns you have a building official who's an employee of the town. And the school system is a town school system. And so there really is no point in the town charging itself a building permit fee when they've got an employee who's gonna get paid whether they have a construction project or have no construction projects. In Washington, their building per, their building official is hired as a consultant. And as a result, they, it, it's, it's difficult for Washington to say, we're gonna rebate the building permit fee without going in the hole for the cost of the consultants. Now, in some towns, we could hire a consultant to handle this work and get it done and probably get it done pretty fast. But in Washington, the, the building official wants to handle this, this project and wants to do the review. So that is, that's what we're gonna do. And so that, that's really where it is. And we're getting a little bit of a delay put on us because he wants to see a hundred percent signed sealed documents. We were planning to use ninety percent documents that are probably gonna be, end up looking exactly like the hundred percent documents. But they, they do want, he does seem to want something that's a little bit more complete. So this is gonna buy us a delay and that's why I'm concerned that this, this, this project, the main part of the AgSTEM, may bleed into the start of school. We've bumped a bunch of dates because we had some delays along the way, but we're hoping to claw that back. We really want to complete the work we expected to have done by August 19. I really would like to complete it prior to August 25, which is the first day of school. So that's where we are on that. So there, there's your building permit fee and I believe we're gonna end up paying the whole thing. And frankly, whatever we gotta do to get this project started, I think is the important thing.
And just to clarify, so the two hundred and forty-two thousand goes to an outside consultant or it goes to the town of Washington?
No, I, I'm not quite sure where every penny of it goes, but some of it will go to the town. I was, imagine some of it would go to the town of Washington. Some of it will go to the consultant and the consultant, the consultant, the consultants, the consultant engages. The building official engages who handle things in mechanical systems and things that are outside of, that require a certain level of expertise. You know, in, in a lot of towns and a lot of projects, what happens is, is the, the building, especially if the building official is an employee of the town, the building official really does not want to review a gigantic project. Okay, because it's an enormous amount of work, it's an enormous amount of risk. And a lot of times, things are very complicated and not what they're used to handling. So in a lot of towns, they allow the, the builder to engage their own consultants in, to bring them in to review the plans. They bring in engineers and other people to review the plans. And that, I, I believe if we were doing that here, that portion of it would probably be less than what we're ending up paying. But there's another piece of the building permit process, which is the building official has to come back and inspect the work that's done. So when work, a permit's pulled to do, I don't know, to, to do plumbing, the building official comes back when the work is completed, but before they seal it up in the walls to look at it and make sure it meets code. So you have a two-step process. You've got a building official trying to verify that it's in compliance with the building code. We have an architect who's verifying to us that the work that was done by the contractor is in compliance with the building code. We have a commissioning agent looking over everyone's shoulders to make sure that the systems are in compliance and work. And so that's really the process. It's, it's a lot of looking and seeing, but unfortunately, we're paying a lot of money for, for building inspection work and for, and for building permit fee, but that's the nature of the beast. It's out, it's gonna be out the door in a few days.
I, I, I think your question is a good question, Julie, and I will make sure that I follow up with the town. And Jay Hubblebank is also on the building committee and is a selectman. We'll just maybe get an itemized bill and make sure that the town is not making money off this. You know, that, that the, the permit is, is covering the, the actual costs. And hopefully they'll be able to provide that, that kind of detail. But I, I'm glad that we were able to get the money or the purchase order to, to, to move the process along. And so then as the inspections happen, hopefully they will be able to sort of itemize that out for us.
In addition to that, the, in addition to that which was approved last Thursday at a special meeting, tonight, we approve the expenditure of an additional three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to Castle Booze, which is for the two projects, the AgSTEM and science lab. And it was to bring the construction documents from fifty percent completed to seventy-five percent completed. They should be ninety percent completed by, by the eighth of this month. And, or, I'm sorry, the eleventh of this month, they should have the final ninety percent level completion. It may take until July before they're at a hundred percent. And normally what they do is they submit ninety percent documents. The building official looks at and building official may want changes. They make changes and they work their way to a hundred percent documents in conjunction with the building official. So that's normally the way it's done, but I think the building official is trying to avoid having documents looked at multiple times. So there, it's a process. We're working on it. The town's been very cooperative and we will, we will get there. It'll be, it'll be something that's worked out. But there's a few little details that have to be ironed out. And we have, you know, good people who are working on it and I'm sure we'll reach something that moves us along a little faster. I'd really like to try to get the plans reviewed sooner than the thirty days that the building official has to review them because every week we can get back out of the process is a week, is a week we can get back out of potential delays of, of opening. Now, we're also gonna prioritize so we're, you know, even if we end up having a delay on, on everything we hope to open by the nineteenth of August, we're gonna try to get most of it open under any circumstances. So we're, we've got Plan A, Plan B, Plan C and Plan D. And we're, we're giving a lot of attention and working on it. The, so, so we have awarded contracts for, for demolition and abatement. They will be engaged by ONG. ONG will supervise and, and work through that and then ONG will bill us for, for what's due. Contracts are fixed amount. As we are required to do by law, we select the minimum the, the minimum qualified bidder. In this case, it was the minimum bidder on both contract sets. All of the bidders were qualified. And so that's, that's what we've done. So we were fortunate to get the the lowest possible bids, but there's still obviously substantial numbers. Six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for abatement and remediation and four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for trades and the work that's done and the demolition and whatnot. So that's where we are.
Greg, the building inspector, does he or she understand the schedule pressure that we're under?
We have done our level best to make everyone in the town of Washington that's, that's, takes part in this decision. All, and there are various other people who have to do inspections. There's a, there's a a health official and others. We've let them all know the need to move quickly and that we really cannot brook any delays that are unnecessary. And if there's anything our people can do to help them move it along, we would be only too delighted. I mean, they had asked not to get all the plans at once, so our people brought the plans in in pieces to show them and to bring them up to speed and keep them up to speed. ONG and, and Castle Booze have really done their best to try to bring in things to help them understand what we're planning and how it's gonna work and where we are with things. So we're cooperating with the town, the town's cooperating with us. We, we just need to get over this hump of trying to get the, the process started and, and get it finished as quickly as possible. Even if it could be completed in three weeks, it would be a help. It would claw back another week. And so we've got several things along the schedule where we're planning to try to claw back time and, and get us back on, on schedule. Look, we were, we had issues on cost. We solved those and we brought it back to being on budget. And we'll do the same thing with time. It's, it's a fair amount of work, but it, it's gotta be done. And we have good people that are working for us. So I think we'll-
Need any help from, from the board in this regard?
I don't think so unless you have any special pull with the, with the Board of Selectmen in Washington.
I'll be happy to talk to the selectmen if it, if you think it would help.
Yeah, well, I, I think they're aware of, I think they're aware of it, but obviously I think everyone needs to know that this is a very important project and it would be, you know, we're doing it. So the question is, how, how can we get it done quickly and on time?
I'll reach out to Mark.
Rather than late.
He appreciates this, just make sure he's just-
No, and again, the town of Washington has been incredibly cooperative and, and very eager to help. And so it's, it's a matter of working together, but sometimes the problem is when you're a building official and you're used to looking at a set of plans that's got five pages in it and someone walks in and puts a project on your desk where the set of plans goes from the desk to here, which is what we're doing, it's a daunting task. And so we're trying to help them break it down and, and get it to a level where it's tolerable. Because it's an enormous amount of stuff. I mean, already they, you know, the set of plans we last brought to DAS, when it was rolled, it was almost a foot and- rolled, it was almost a foot in diameter. And, and so this is what you've got. There's a lot of stuff in there, and it's a complicated process to do this kind of level of building. This is not simple construction. But in any event, that's, that's sort of where we're going. As I told you before, in the past, we had decided to engage a consultant to advise us which of our low voltage systems, these are things like bells, clocks, security systems, cameras, things like that, which of those systems in our school can be expanded to the new areas so we don't waste money and time trying to expand something that's reached its limit? Through Don's hard work, we were able to cut the cost of that review from $5,000 to $1,500 with a consultant who is somewhat familiar with our school and has done work here before. And we believe that we are going to get some really good advice that will help us save some more money on those systems. I mean, I did raise the question, why do we have bells and clocks in schools anyway? Who looks at a clock anymore? In fact, if you look at these clocks, you rarely see one that actually tells the correct time. If you've ever been to a meeting I've chaired, I always talk about the meeting commencing and adjourning at a certain time, and it's either Apple time or Google time. It's not coming, once it was Shapog time, and it was, it was wrong. It was wrong by three minutes. So the question is, if you've got clocks that don't reflect an accurate time, why are we expanding clock systems? Why do they ring bells? Why don't we just simply give a PA chime at, at five minutes before the end of a class period and finally, the announcement at the end? So these are things that we're looking at to see if we can, if we can achieve some savings in, in some of our systems. So that's pretty much where it is right now. We have another meeting next Monday. This will be the fourth or fifth meeting in two and a half weeks. So it's gotten very busy at the building committee, and we, we hope to be, again, we hope construction will start on the 5th of July with the demolition.
Okay. Any other questions for Greg? John?
Yeah, um, if the project falls behind the scheduled pace or is, you know, is in the rears, there's been speculation that the contractors would put in overtime or holiday or weekend work. Is that a consideration? If so, where does that fit with the overall cost?
Right now, we don't, we won't know until the, until the schedules are refined a little bit more, whether they would anticipate anything like that happening. So far, we have not received an indication that they will be needing to expend more money than is in the budget to accomplish tasks. And we also have an option, which is if we, we believe we can get most of what we need online by the first day of school, is there may be a few things that take just a little bit longer. We may decide to let the, to, to suffer the delay, but we're hoping we won't have a delay. And we'll find out as we get closer to actual bid documents, whether or not they anticipate any additional funds being necessary in any, any individual trades.
So would that be a supplemental billing or who knows?
Well, it's going to be, whatever the cost of the project is, it's going to be included in their guaranteed price. And also, they're going to have, they're going to have a guaranteed maximum price. It's a guaranteed maximum price, because if the cost of the job falls below ONG's guaranteed maximum, those, those savings accrue to us. So they're guaranteeing a maximum. And I, they're also working on timing, they're scoping out the time for various trades to be on site, to get things done that need to be done. What they may do if we're suffering a delay is they may move certain work to critical work to get the school open on time, and they may move other things which are less critical. For example, if it means delaying the construction of one science lab that's not used for chemistry, they may just simply decide to, to do that in order to finish something over at AgSTEM. So, I mean, they're going to have the site mobilized, and they're going to be able to make those kind of adjustments. That's what we expect. But I will pay attention to that, John, because if it affects cost, we are laser focused on that. And we've told them two things. One, the cost cannot exceed what we've talked about, and number two, what we've approved. And number two, the job needs to be done on time, and they need to do what they got to do to make sure that happens.
Any other questions? Greg, thank you. All right. Michelle, policies, second reading of food service charging.
Yep. Policy 3542.43. This is a policy that we did not have before, and it is state mandated. It defines some, it defines charging, the methods for which students are allowed to charge or go below their, their, yes, thank you, go into debt, on, on their lunch services.
Jim, I'm sorry, I was looking at the policy.
I move to approve policy 3542.43, food servicing charging, as second reading of the board.
I'll second.
Thank you, Julie. All right. Are there any further discussion on the matter? Any questions? Oh, you have a question? So this is a wholesale read-in of, of the policy that Kay provided. No change, we didn't make any changes to it?
I don't remember. I know we sent it to Bob in the business office to have the cafeteria look at it, and I.
We determined it's a workable policy the way it is, and it's another one of those handed down from above by the federal government through this child nutrition program and just defines what we can and can't do and where the money comes from.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion passes unanimously.
Anthony.
Thank you. Jim?
I was just, I was just going to go to the next item.
Which is the health nutrition program?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that Region 12 Board would not participate under the Connecticut nutrition standards as a fourth in item three on the agenda.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded by Alan. Are there any questions, discussions on this point?
Can I just ask for Bob's input? He usually inputs on this. This is something that you're recommending, Bob?
Okay.
I seem to be talking a lot.
Pretty popular tonight, Bob.
I know, that's okay. But anyway, the child nutrition program, we follow all the guidelines and so forth to the program. However, the, it's, it's such an onerous process for the district in general that we can stay in compliance, still keep the program going without going through all the other hoops that they want us to go through, that we don't have the resources to do, such as a certified dietary nutritionist. We just don't have the funding nor the number of students that we require that. It stays us in compliance, we're happy with the way it's running, cafeteria can keep it in the, following the guidelines, so it's a good idea not to get too involved. Plus, it would add more cost to the program than we can afford.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion passes unanimously to not participate under the Connecticut nutrition standards as published by the Connecticut Department of Education for the school year 2018-19. You're welcome. Thank you. Pat, safety and security, I guess with Barbara's resignation, it's going to be an interesting bookend.
Yes. As I said, our SRO today resigned. Her last day will be June 22nd, so she'll be here throughout the kids' last day. So, yeah, it's very sad because she's excellent SRO. But we will post the position and move forward, hopefully find someone of her high quality and caliber. So, the chair asked me to put together some information about school safety. I did the best I could. Unfortunately, Officer Alancas couldn't be here tonight, and Vic couldn't be here tonight. And they helped me do this, but Don is here, so I will just go through the report quickly, what I put together, and then if you have questions, we'll do our best to answer. I can't promise that I can answer everything. I'm going out of order also. For compliance with safety procedures, we are in compliance with all the Connecticut general statutes regarding safety and security. Each school, I'm not going to give you each number if you, and I didn't make copies for everybody because I don't like this stuff out there, some of it. But we, each school has a safe school climate plan, and they develop it each year. We have a plan to implement anonymous reports for bullying and written reports from parents with suspected bullying. We investigate if criminal conduct is suspected. The principal notifies the law enforcement, so we follow that very, very carefully. We provide prevention and intervention strategies regarding, regarding bullying and teen dating violence, together with the Women's Center of Danbury. We have a program that addresses, and I believe Mrs. DeBrito went through that with you a couple of months ago. Each district has a safe school climate coordinator, we have that, and committees. We develop and implement a school safety and security plan, establish school security and safety committee. We submit plans annually to Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. Those plans are reviewed by myself and the SRO, okay, so that there's many eyes on them. We have a school safety and security plan that's an all hazards approach. We, again, required to have law enforcement and public safety officials evaluate and assess them. We have fire and crisis drills. We conduct security and vulnerability assessments at each school every two years, and I get a report on that. Barbara usually does it with Don, and there are pictures of where there are areas that need to be, you know, worked on and, and things that eventually need to be addressed, and it works its way through the facilities committee and hopefully to the budget, et cetera. Each, we conduct a fire drill at each school within the first 30 days of school, one each month afterwards, and some of them are substituted by crisis drills. You know, and there is a lot of talk out in the, not our community, but the community in general of educators, do we want to have different kind of crisis drills? And, you know, that's just something to consider with the world we live in, what kind of things do you want to prepare kids and staff for? Okay. On completion of drill and security and vulnerability assessments, Region 12 works quickly and efficiently to remedy discrepancies noted within budget parameters. So these are the things that right now are on, still on our radar. Unsecure classroom doors at all schools, open ground level windows, especially here at SVS, unsecure building doors at all schools. So the doors, that really is a culture that we're trying to change. You know, if you, most safety people and security people will tell you, one access in, one access out. It's a very hard culture to follow. We try our best, but you know, the soccer team's outside, somebody leaves a sneaker in the door, or a rock by the door, or, you know, somebody has to go to the bathroom and they, you know, come out and they run, you know, out and the door doesn't close. So it's that kind of stuff. The need for audible notification devices in every occupied space here at SVS, that is going to be in the agri-science program and the project, so that will be done. This came up, we discussed it, it never got into the budget this year, but the need for a security monitor at all the elementary schools or an additional SRO. Secondary secure vestibule entrances at all schools, that's being brought to the facilities committee if it hasn't been done already. So basically, that would be, if you think about Shapog, you get buzzed in the front door, you are then in the vestibule. You do not leave that vestibule and get buzzed into the rest of the building until you're, you're checked for the reason you're there, et cetera, et cetera. So it's that kind of thing. Phone line at SVS door and a monitor for the desk, that will be done this summer, it's in the budget. And PA access on all phone lines, and that will be done again, completed this summer. Okay? So some things are being done, some things are still on a list, and it's not that we don't want to do things, but when it's budget time, you have many, many things on the list and you have to prioritize. So that's that piece. The next one is, people are asking about emergency generators and backup, for backup communications, et cetera. So basically, Don has done an initial investigation to get a generator on a trailer just for WPS, which maybe could then go to other schools if needed, would be $94,000. So that's something to consider.
I'm sorry, Pat, could I just add something to that?
Yeah, please.
The reason it's $94,000 is not because the generator costs that much, it's because Washington primary has been built in pieces, and it has a unique problem, which is getting the conduit and lines to be able to service areas, nodes that are located in different parts of the building. It requires a tremendous infrastructure investment. Look, we made a decision a long time ago in this district that we wanted to stick with our antique buildings. And the problem with that is, is that when you do something like a generator, you end up having a lot of extra cost associated with it. So, you know, when you say the, when, when, as our people said a number of years ago, they didn't want to spend money to renovate to new, and this goes back quite a number of years, because it was a lot of money. You're going to spend the money anyway, the question is when. And this is one of those instances, if you want a generator or a primary, the only way to hook it up is to spend tens of thousands of dollars on infrastructure. I just wanted you to understand that.
Okay. Thank you. That was my number two bullet, but not said as eloquently. The, we were able to install the princess phones at each school in the front offices that are tied to the fax, so if we do lose the phones or the power outages, we still are able to get phone calls. And the, as I said, the 2018-19 budget has funds to improve the internal communications in each school that would replace the existing problematic old technology for the public announcing systems. And Greg is right, the buildings are old, and anytime you do any of this work, it's very, very difficult. The infrastructure's not there, it's just, there's just a lot of increased costs. Then the third question that came up, and this is the one that I'm not as expert on as I am on the other two, backup communication in the event of fiber optic disruption. So, on March 6, we lost the internet at SVS, WPS, and Central Office. The VoIP phones, which is the voiceover phones, had no communication externally as well as internally, room to room. The loss of the internet was due to the break in the fiber approximately 1,200 feet from the SVS campus. It was the, the main trunk of the CEN network, which is the Connecticut Educational Network. That is the network we use for internet in Connecticut. Okay. So now, in relation to the main trunk, the network created a fold in the network, and this fold did not allow us to take advantage of the diversity in the send network. Once the outage was discovered, we took immediate action to report it, we discovered it right away, a call into CEN proved it was a localized issue of Burnham and Booth, at here, but Burnham and Booth were up and running. The technician dispatched SVS identified as the break, however, because there was a big problem down in the southern part of the state, and many of those schools didn't even have schools, schools canceled because it was a big storm, they couldn't get up to us until 11 o'clock that night. So it wasn't that we couldn't get it repaired quickly, it was that we couldn't get the repair people here quickly. So it's, we're working to, to improve this. And this is really Vic, honestly, I'm just giving you what he told me, and if you have questions, if you email them to me, I can get Vic to answer, and maybe he can come to the next meeting, he couldn't come tonight. To prevent a CEN outage from affecting the internal and external communications, we have to reach out to Spectrum. We did that. We've asked if it's possible to utilize their existing fiber connection at SVS, to use for our broadcast of our TV station. So we are working with the Spectrum engineers, no answer has been given. We're waiting for feedback regarding a satellite internet option. A vendor of ours is currently designing the solution for another client and has not gotten live yet. The last option is. The last option is purchasing a commercial residential internet solution at a monthly fee for backup. They identified some processes to help cope with any future outages. They have an automatic process now to forward each school's main number to a fax line in the office. That'll have an emergency phone. Also, depending on the nature of the outage, extensions can be forwarded to other extensions or group to help with calls. We can also move users and their phones to a site with internet to have calls answered. So this is an ongoing concern. You know, with the past storm, this storm on March 6th. You know, we're in an area that does not have great cell service, the internet, it's just, it's problematic. We have people working on it, is not my area of expertise. One recommendation I will give to our new superintendent is when you do get your new phone, make sure you get an AT&amp;T phone because the Verizon doesn't work up here. We found that out when WPS lost their power a couple of months ago. And my phone didn't work, but Don's did. So, you know, we're running as fast as we can. As I said, I gathered a lot of this information. And if you have questions, I can relay them and get answers. Or you can email me the questions and I can get people to work on things. Yeah?
Quick question. Actually, two. So, so on the, on the emergency generators, Don, I understand the situation with WPS, as Greg explained it. But was that the first sounding you've taken on providing emergency generation for each of the schools? Yeah, could you please, Don? Otherwise, I get the red card over there that says microphone.
Yes.
That's a long way to go for yes, Don.
Who said it, Tom? It's Tom? Okay, yes, that was my first venture.
That was the first one.
That includes the heat, the boiler room heat, the well pump, and the communications panels. But like Greg has said, because we've talked about it in the committee, the primary panel's in the central office, but all the equipment's in the school next door. So the panels have to go back and forth.
Right, right.
And it creates a cost. The generator is a one-time cost. And the reason I selected a trailer-mounted unit is because we may, we may get to put transfer switches in the other schools and then utilize one generator and try to reduce the cost overall and not have three. But it is an option.
But you're, you're still in the evaluation phases.
Yeah, I've called and, and I've, I've eliminated the boilers after the facility committee talked about it. They indicated that I should take the boilers out of it because if we had a no heat situation, more than likely, we would move the children or close the school.
Okay, and just, just a quick follow-up on that one. Is, perhaps I should know this, but is this school, for example, a shelter?
No, it is not.
It's not? Are any of our schools shelters?
No, they're not. They're not capable of it, not at the moment.
Okay.
This school did attempt, and you probably remember it had a generator at one time. It did attempt to have a generator, but it was for peak shaving, back when the electrical prices were really raising high. And they attempted to use the latent heat generated from the equipment to make power to pump back into the school. But it failed miserably.
Yeah. I've heard of it.
Well, what happened was they used plastic piping under the ground and when they had nowhere to put the heat, it circulated and melted the piping, so.
So just a, just a-
Well thought through.
Follow-up to the question that Anthony was just asking you. Don, as far as the three towns, I assume have emergency operations plans. Has the school system ever taken part in discussions with the three towns about what part, if any, we should be playing? You said that from right now, it doesn't sound like we have any role to play as far as shelters, but-
Well, the answer is yes, we do. Barbara is the intermediary between those emergency people in those towns. Rocky just so happens to be our security and he is the manager here in Washington. When we had the week's worth of outage from the hurricane, we did play a part, although we weren't a shelter. We had showers that were operating, so we allowed the Washington and other residents around the surrounding towns to come in and utilize our showers.
It might behoove us to start that conversation. And all we need to do is look at neighboring towns. Unfortunately, Southbury and Brookfield, very close, and they've just gone through this. If you look at the town of Brookfield, for example, Brookfield High School was the shelter for the town. And for a week, they were providing, they were providing showers, they were providing cots in the gymnasium. I don't know of too many locations in the three towns that could handle large numbers of people if we ever had a similar large-scale disaster. God forbid we do. But, I mean, in my mind, we have, we've got the resources here. We can, we could, you know, with a little bit of planning, be that center, that shelter for emergency operations. Not sure why we wouldn't want to kind of kill two birds with one stone, not only provide for our students, but also be a community asset in that way.
I think Bob has a comment.
That's exactly what happened when we had a week plus of no, no anything with the ice storm. There's a plan in place that, it's a regional plan, we're part of it, they're part of our plan. And there's that cooperation going back and forth because by statute, we have to be part of the plan. When it's activated, we are able to access resources from the region, regional source. And they would bring in cots, they would bring in whatever we would need. The point person at the current time is Rocky because he coordinated for this portion of the state. So to answer your question, if that had happened, we would be looked upon as a resource for that. The downfall of this is that we don't, we were able to maintain some power here. That's hence why they were coming here for showers and we opened it up. But if we had anywhere to put money into a generator, this probably makes the most amount of sense up here. Because it's, it's the highest, it's out of the flood zone. I mean, even if you put something in the depot, for example, that's still a flood plain area.
Put trailer on stilts.
Yeah, I know, but you still have the problem.
Get it out of here.
And we do have other alternative plans as well. In the event we have to vacate that building or any of the buildings, we can move students to other warm, safe for that period of time until we can get them back to a safe environment or to dismiss them to their houses that day. So we have those in place. Luckily, we don't have to use it very often.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions for Don? John?
Yeah, obviously, the Connecticut statute sort of governs the security and vulnerability assessment. And when you look at the recommendations that Barbara makes, it's quite extensive and almost daunting. Even if we started today, is there some kind of a mandate or a compliance for all of these things? It's like, what is the price and what, you know? Obviously, it's going to take years to bring it all into, if we, you know, if we follow all the recommendations.
I would agree.
It's not certain how the heck. Will, will there be state reimbursement if we comply?
State reimbursement is available for various projects that are put forward to the state and agreed to by the state. And many of them do not need the legislature's approval. There's already money in place. Our project needs their approval because of its size. But there are many state reimburse projects that can be done here in the district, yes.
Really, John, I think, well, Michelle, go ahead, comment.
I just wanted to say, when I was reading through the reports, it, it looks overwhelming and daunting, I understand that. But I also wanted to point out how much we've done in the last, I don't know, seven, seven years, certainly since Sandy Hook. We've changed all of the door handles. We've put in, we had no video cameras. We've put in video cameras and buzzers on all the doors. We've done hundreds of thousands of dollars of work to bring us to where we are. And nobody, I mean, we're always trying to, to do the best that we can with what we have and to improve. But these buildings were built a long time ago, not with some of the concerns that we have now in mind. So it's pretty hard to retrofit. You know, we have a lot of ground level windows, I mean, we can't raise up the building. So I think, I think when reading those reports, it's, it's best to, to realize that we continue to move forward and make wise choices and do the best that we can, knowing that we've, we've improved a lot already. And not all of it. We will never, we will never be able to make these schools 100% safe. And if we were to make them 100% safe, it would be a fortress. So, so we have to, to continue to make wise choices.
Each year's budget includes a number of items for the past seven or so years to make improvements, small improvements as we go forward. We talk about them in the committee and we get them on the budget as we can.
And we did secure a security grant.
Right, we started off-
About five years ago, which we had a plan and we implemented all the things within that. But you don't always get a grant from the state either because it's a competitive grant, but it's continually looked at. And the state hasn't been funding it to the level that they should have been funding it with their own problems. But if we were to undertake a major building project in any of the schools that required us to get state assistance on it, that's one of the items in the checklist. We have to do certain things to bring it to a safe level, but it's not mandated until such time. We're actually ahead of where we need to be in terms of any law because of everybody's diligence of looking at these things. Barbara's recommendations are, in an ideal world, and unfortunately, we don't have even the space to put in, in some instances, vestibules because of the way the buildings are situated. But we continually look at them.
And I will be putting the numbers in future budgets for you to consider.
Greg, sorry.
And you have to take these reports in stride. Were we to make each of our schools into something resembling a maximum security prison, where there were only one entrance and exit, where there were no ground level windows, where everything was under tight security, the threat would be neutralized at the school and it would move to the buses as they roll, as they roll in with children. That's where, that's where these, the danger would be. And then if you brought the buses in under the school and created a massive infrastructure project in order to make that safe, the threat would go to the bus stops. I mean, the bottom line is, you, you, what you need to do are the things that are reasonable and appropriate to make sure you can control access to the building and that you can lock the building down in the event there's a problem. So that you can actually keep our children and staff members safe until, until the police arrive. And that's what you're really trying to do. You're trying to take reasonable steps. Now, there were a lot of good suggestions in Barbara's report. I think the idea of monitoring the entries a little bit differently is a good thing. But you'll notice that, I mean, I've heard people tell me about the budget debate. Well, you know, why do we have two principals at the elementary schools? When Dick Hoffman was principal, he did all three schools. Well, did you notice in her report that she said we really, it's definitely an issue that we have a principal that splits their time between two schools? So can you imagine if it was three? There would be schools the principal would not be in on days of the week. And so you see, you have to look at what your budget is, what your priorities are, and what your safety concerns are. And that's why this report is so valuable. And it's gonna, and facilities is looking at it really carefully. But one of the things that bothered me most about the incident where we lost the fiber optic cable, for almost an entire day, we were without telephone access in and out of the school, other than the one phone that was attached to the fax machine. There's a simple, simple solution for that. And that is, Region 12 should strongly consider soliciting and placing a cell tower on this property and be able to have Class A cell service right here. So that people don't have to, if they need to use their cellphone, go out and climb a tree in order to get some, a couple of bars on the phone. And I can tell you, the other day, I had to make a phone call and I had to go out in the parking lot and drive around till I found a spot that you could actually get some connectivity. And I have AT&amp;T, Verizon, it wouldn't have been anything. So that's one simple solution that we could do and it wouldn't cost us a penny. Because we'd actually receive income from the rental of the tower. And so there are things we can do and should do to improve that. But that was, I think, the biggest glaring problem, was the lack of telecommunications access. Because everyone has a cellphone. But if you have no reception, that's a hard problem. So there you go.
I did make an attempt three years ago, and I contacted AT&amp;T and Verizon, both of whom I went up the corporate ladder and contracted regional vice presidents, both of whom felt an interest to start with in putting microtower or microcells in the front offices of the buildings. And there are small cells that'll connect, in AT&amp;T's case, only five cellphones. But in Verizon's, it'll take as much traffic as it could handle. And they both pushed me down to their regional people who quickly stopped contacting me. It came down to the dollar. There was no monetary incentive for them. And there was no other incentive for them to be helpful to us and provide them. I attempted to, to convince them, or attempted to convince them to say, "Well, you indicate that your service is 100% in this area, but it is not. Therefore, I believe you should put it in at your cost." But that's not what turned them away. They just didn't see a need and didn't see a dollar. So they weren't interested and they stopped calling. They won't even take my calls anymore. You know, what Pat has, what she's saying here in Vic's area is that we presently have some cable TV in each of the schools. So try to, to make that into an internet connection that will at least connect the front offices and see if that'll help. To be honest with you, I've made attempts to call Charter 2, a number of attempts. And I know how Vic feels. Because there must be one person that answered that phone and they're locked in the building somewhere and they're only allowed to make one call a day. These people are not responsive.
They're at the lunch with Verizon.
Yeah, right, right. But we've made many, many attempts to do that. And we'll continue, we're not going to give up on it.
Yeah. These are tough problems, for sure. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, Don. Appreciate it, Pat. Thank you for that readout. Okay, we are not going to have an executive session this evening. That's going to be perhaps rescheduled as required, I would imagine. So therefore, do I have a motion to adjourn? Jim? All right, all those in favor? We are hereby adjourned. Thank you.